Called to order the Committee on Finance and Property as well as Committee of the Whole. Tonight is a Finance and Property Committee of the Whole meeting related to the city budget. And tonight, we're going to hear from the Health Department as well as our public schools. Before we get started, just want to acknowledge we have a number of city staff. Dr. Sue Turoczak from our school department. We have Laura Delachay from our health department. Our budget analyst, Jerry Perry, who's been still drilling along with us. City Chief of Staff, Jocelyn Kursker, and a number of other school department staff. I guess with that, we'll start with the Health Department. And Ms. Delachay would you...
Delachay.
Delachay, I apologize. Would you like to get started tonight?
Thank you, councilors. I just want to say thank you for adjusting my schedule a little bit for me as I decided to take a trip halfway around the world. So I appreciate you accommodating me tonight.
Did you want to say a few words about your budget?
Yes, sorry. This is my first time hearing, so I was like...
I thought you were organizing your notes.
Who starts? Yes, so welcome or very nice to meet all of you if I haven't met you in person yet. My name's Laura Delachay. I started as the new Public Health Director here, March of this past year. I took over the role from Bill Burke, who was here, I think, the last 24, 25 years. And I'm saying I really love the department here and working for the City of Beverly. Even when I interviewed here with some of the staff members and the mayor, I could just tell that this is a city that really wants to make a difference and do something different. And I feel that they supported ideas that I had in the Health Department and kind of where I want to see the Health Department go forward. And just a little bit of background on the Health Department. So currently, we have a full-time, full-time staff of two administrative clerks. We have a full-time public health nurse, three sanitarians now, part-time dental hygienist, and a dental clerk as well, and then myself. What we focus on typically in the Health Department is a lot of compliance and enforcement action as we do a lot of regulating of local health regulations as well as state and federal. So obviously, you know, the major ones, food, housing, septic pools, beaches, we do all of that. But what I'd like to also see the department do more of is, as we are a community services department, I'd like to see us offer more services to the community that we directly, I guess, make an impact with the individual. And although public health is very much about preventing the problem before we see it, a lot of individuals think of us kind of as like, we go to the Health Department when there's problems or, you know, we have to, oh, we have to go to the Board of Health to get approved for this. But I want to have residents see us as a resource for them and a place that they can come to and have questions answered and not fear that they're going to get shut down or closed. We want to work with our residents and invite them in. And so trying to establish that community relationship. Some of the things in our department, I don't know if it's okay if I go over.
Yes, please.
I ramble. Mayor tells me I talk a lot, so if I talk too much, let me know.
Talking to the wrong group here.
But, um...
Please continue.
Thank you. Even just our general layout, and I know the city is working on this with developing the new City Hall. Our office right now is not very conducive to greet residents and clientele that we have coming into the office. We don't have a front-facing counter, which is something that really bothered me when I started here because I'm very used to, I used to sit in a bullpen where I was even as Assistant Health Director, but I faced the counter directly. So the first face anyone saw coming in was me. And I do kind of miss that because I, there's something about just interacting with the residents and getting up right away and having, and just responding to them that makes a big difference to me and also establishes that connection with our department. And I feel like we're kind of lacking that in this space. But obviously, we're going to be eventually moving back to City Hall, so I'm really hoping in our, our new developed plans that that's going to be addressed. Some other things I'd really like to see eventually in the Health Department is a social worker. I love a lot of the work we do in the Health Department as well as just the city in general. A lot of the other departments, whether they realize it or not, are doing a lot of social services work. And we, we have social, social workers for council and aging. We have one with the Police Department. But they are specifically tasked with handling certain populations in, in the community. And I know we also do have them in schools and counselor adjusters and whatnot. But we don't have anyone to deal with the general population. Like when we get a hoarding case, it's a multifaceted issue, lots of underlying health problems. But if they're, you know, not a student in Beverly Public Schools or they're not dealing with substance use addiction or they're not elderly, what resources are available for them? And I see that as a large gap where I feel sometimes helpless with these individuals I know need resources. But again, I'm not a licensed social worker. And again, to bridge those gaps through our Health Department, I'd really love to see that.
Thank you, Ms. Delachay. I appreciate that. Before we open it up to questions, just wanted to acknowledge our School Committee President, Rachel LaBelle, for being here. I apologize for that oversight. Thank you for being here. And that we've been joined by our Mayor, Mike Cahill. Thank you, Mayor, for being here. I guess I'll open up for any questions or discussion. Council President.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. It's a pleasure to meet you. This is something we did touch on a little bit. I know you weren't able to be here the other night, so you don't have to belabor the point with me, but I am just curious. I noticed your FY '24 goals. And one of them was about hiring a full-time sanitarian. And so we had a little bit of discussion about positions you've already been able to fill. And I remember saying that night, I guess you can already check off some of her goals. But could you just talk a little bit about where you stand in terms of staffing for the department, some of the positions you had a goal to fill?
Of course. So yeah, we, we did accomplish that in the Health Department, obviously, before the new fiscal year, which I was very excited about. But when I started here, it was just Joe as their full-time sanitarian, who has been here for the last 35 years with the City of Beverly. He had been the only one full-time in the office covering those roles and responsibilities since, I believe, January of 2022. So it'd been over a year of Joe just doing all these inspections on his own. And although we had some funding that we were hiring part-time inspectors for, they may have been doing equivalent of eight to 10 hours a week combined. And it's hard to assign part-time inspectors, housing cases, especially these get carried out long times. They need constant follow-up. And I felt that we were just not providing the level of service that we needed to in the Health Department. So hiring a full-time staff was a top priority for me. Again, I want to make sure that residents are getting their complaints and concerns heard in a timely manner, but also resolved in a timely manner. And I didn't feel that that was happening just because the lack of staffing we had. So one of the first things I sat down and discussed with Mayor and HR is that we needed to hire another full-time sanitarian. And we did that. We hired Stephen Casey, who is a sanitarian or health inspector who came from the city of, or town of North Andover. So he's doing great, and we're very happy to have him in this role. And shortly after that, Mayor approved us for a third sanitarian. Because again, the complaints and our unfunded mandates that the Health Department continues to get from the State Health Department continue to grow, but the, the funding and the manpower does not grow with it. And so Mayor approved us with ARPA funds to hire a third full-time sanitarian, which we have done. So we have three full-time sanitarians now. And even our administrative assistants telling me today that, they say it's great. They can schedule things the day of, and some days we can have complaints or concerns resolved within 24 hours.
May I ask one follow-up?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That's really helpful. I appreciate your perspective on having complaints not only heard but resolved. A question that I have just as a follow-up, and this may be a question for, for you, Mayor, or for Mr. Chiani. But with the ARPA-funded third position, is that intended to be a long-term position? Or would it be a shorter term? I guess what I'm asking is, will the city budget pick that up on a regular basis once the ARPA funds sort of are expended for that position? Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President, Mr. Chair, and everybody. So two points. One is, we're going to look at that third position. It may well be that we all collectively decide at the end of calendar year '24, or maybe in preparing next year's budget, by that point, that we have seen it prove out, the need, the worth, and we'll look to try to support it in the operating budget. The ARPA funds are good through end of calendar year '24, so that would be halfway through next fiscal year, correct? So that's really the thinking. You know, I think you can make a strong case that three full-time sanitarians is more right-sized for the department, for the community. So we'll see, but we're going to take full advantage of the ARPA funds in the meantime. And I just do want to point out, because Ms. Delachay makes some good points about the need, I will say that Mr. Burke had approval to use ARPA funds as well for a third position. He tried, first, remember David Goodwin left, and that's the, that's the second position that we had, had a hard time filling. And so Mr. Burke tried to hire full-time and wasn't getting, it was really hard hiring, if you remember. And we're still, you know, it's still not easy hiring at this point. When he went through that interview process, he then came to me and said, I've got these two people I know, they're about to retire, they recently retired, they each have expertise in different areas, I could bring them on without any training, let's get them in place and let's keep looking. And so when, when Ms. Delachay came in, we still were in that place of needing that second full-time. She's done a fantastic job of finding people. And, but I think, you know, we, even though we were not at full strength, Mr. Burke was trying to manage and move things forward as best he could during a really difficult hiring time. I just want to make that point. But to your first question, yes, we'll, we'll see where it leads us, but could well be that, that we want to keep that position on long-term. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilwoman?
Thank you. I'm really excited about sort of the rebuilding post-COVID and the vision for a department. I think the addition of a social worker would, would be great. That those points of contact to help navigate a variety of supports in the city and from state and federal funding is, is really critical for people. So look forward to talking about that further down the line. I think the only other question I had was, I saw the rodent control line was continuing. So happy to see that and just wondered if you had any updates on how it's going, priorities for that funding in the coming year.
Yes. So something Jocelyn and I are working on together is actually, we call it our RAT PAC, our Rodent Education Campaign Meetings that we're, we're trying to create a systematic development in the city, how to address rodent concerns going forward. I do believe the smart boxes are a step in the right direction because it is showing us where the prevalence of the rodents are, where we're having the most concerns, but it's not the ultimate solution. I do think it's a component of it, but ultimately, what we need to do is boots-on-the-ground education with neighborhoods. Before I left for India, I had actually gone out with Modern Pest Services and we visited a few sites where we hadn't been seeing a lot of rodent activity. And then we're going to relocate this box, the boxes, which we're still in the process of, to areas in the neighborhoods that we were getting a lot of complaints from. But even walking around the neighborhoods, you could clearly see it was just kind of lack of knowledge and property maintenance that were causing the rodents, not necessarily something wrong with our city infrastructure. And so eventually, we need to get out there and we need to educate the residents and provide resource for them and help in situations and that. But we have been getting decent amount of catches. So as of February, we've had over 140 catches, so 144 catches. Currently, we have 28 boxes implemented, and it's a roughly 1,500 bucks for installment. We also have been updating our GIS map, that's correct, for the heat map. Yep. And that's kind of been showing us our activity of, our areas of concern. So we have noted a few areas of concern that weren't properly being treated, that now we're reallocating those resources to get those boxes over there. But again, this is just one component, but ultimately, I think it's just going to come down to educate, education, meeting with neighborhood groups, and informing them on how best to mitigate rodents. As well as, something else I want to look at in the Health Department is more control over our commercial dumpsters in Beverly. So obviously, there are a lot of businesses that have commercial dumpsters that we regulate, like our food establishments, but there's a lot of places that we don't necessarily regulate, and we need to follow up on those more and hold property owners and business owners more accountable for those. So I think it's, there's a resident component, but there's also a city component as well. We need to be held responsible to deal with that.
Thanks.
Thank you. I know that's an issue we hear a lot about in the last couple of years. So thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you, Ms. Delachay. I appreciate that, and welcome, welcome to Beverly.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, everyone.
All right, with that, Dr. Turoczak. How are you tonight?
I'm well, thank you. How are you? I have to have Jean be my Vanna for technical difficulties. I'm well, I'm well. And thank you for the opportunity to present the budget to you this evening. I don't think I've been in this room for a while, so it feels kind of like coming home again, so that is kind of cool. So again, I, Jean, if you could just, so, so as I do with each one of my budget presentations, we always start off with the goals of the district. We have a very strong district improvement plan that we've worked on, and it's very important for us because we believe that our goals drive our budget. They are the driver for the decision-making that we make around resources that we look, places that we need to resource, areas that we need to strengthen. And our district goal areas remain creating conditions that promote equity. We've done a lot of work with our schools, with our students, with our families. Rigorous and consistent curriculum in our return back from COVID. It's been a real focus of ours as we look. There's been opportunities to strengthen our curriculum through resources, through high-quality materials that have become available. And so that's an area that we're working really hard on. Innovative practices. We continue to look for areas to strengthen our pathways at the high school, our project-based learning opportunities that we try to have for all of our students, our place-based learning, our outdoor learning. All of these are innovative practices that we believe really strengthen our education for our students. And then finally, operations and management practices, just taking a look at what we have, efficiencies, what areas do we need to strengthen. We've done a lot of work with the city, in conjunction with the city on the Munis and upgrading that and bringing that closer to the 21st century, dare I say, I'm sorry. And so those are just some of the areas that we're working on, and we believe that our budget represents, you know, our commitment to those areas, so. We, as always, start with checking out priorities. So in FY '24, we gathered our stakeholders. I met individually with school committee members. I met with some city councilors, just to kind of say, what are the areas that you all think we need to focus on? What are we seeing in our schools? Some parents, my parent PTO group and advisory groups were sharing with us. So again, no surprise, we still believe that we have a, a strong need to focus on social, emotional learning and mental health. We're still working for, for a lot of families and for a lot of students on coming out of the pandemic and some of the impact that that has had. We're looking to strengthen our transition into freshman academy, as well as looking at counseling and outside partners. We've done a lot of work with our City Connects program in identifying outside partners and ways that we can look for wraparound services for some of our families, because schools aren't the only place that we can provide services. There are community services that we like to tap into as well. Looking for tools for teachers to recognize and respond to students' social, emotional needs in the area of curriculum and teaching. Again, I mentioned the pathways. We are very heavily invested in making sure that we're creating innovative pathways for our students and our, for after-graduation, whether it's a four-year college or a, a more career-based opportunity. Our Academic Supports and Scholars Club, we know that there was learning loss that occurred throughout the pandemic. We had school in so many different varieties, and we're still focusing on how we help some of our students regain that missed opportunity of schooling. Looking for supports for executive functioning. We've strengthened our elementary library supports with our wonderful elementary librarian, who is working at each one of the individual buildings with a team of parents and the, and the staff there. And then finally, in our operational realm, continuing to work on sustainability. We had our sustainable, our Operational Sustainability Committee, I think that's what it's called. And we've done a lot of work increasing opportunities for recycling, looking at food waste, looking at just different options, along with education for our students who are in that area, so that we're creating our future in our students with real eye on, on the good use of energy and all the things that we need to do. We had, we're looking at our transportation. Transportation has been a real challenge for all communities in the last couple of years, between the hiring, which is very challenging. We are fortunate that we run our own transportation department, so we are less at the whim of some of the transportation companies. But still, there are a lot of challenges as far as transportation goes, and we continue to try to strengthen that. We have implemented some new software that we think is, is helpful and put some cameras on our buses so that we're able to kind of follow up and, and be able to make sure that we're providing as much safe, safety as we can in that area. There's, we're entering into discussion about lights and stands at 40 Field. I'm hearing from a lot of stakeholders in the community that are interested in that. And Mark Thomas, who is the principal-elect, is that a word? Who will be the principal on July 1st, has put together a small group to investigate what we could do and what that might look like. So these are just some of the areas that are priorities. And, and then finally, communication is always a priority for us in the schools, streamlining our use of our platform, whatever it is, so that we're communicating with families, and trying to strengthen areas for parent and teacher communication. So these are the priorities that emerged from our meetings with the stakeholder groups that we had. In terms of the budget process, followed very similar process as we have in the past. First, we begin probably in early November, identifying priorities of school committee and stakeholders. We collaborate with principals and central office to develop a shared framework and that helps to guide our decisions. We assess enrollments and the impact those enrollments may have on staffing, whether it be our enrollments within, just in the regular school, in each one of our schools, but as well as our English learners and some of the special populations that might be growing. Identify administrative efficiencies and restructuring opportunities. Review requests for funding from various departments. We collaborate with the city to determine the proposed city contribution in relationship with the school budget. We review the draft proposal with the school committee. We held our own public hearing for the schools on May 10th. And then finally, we're here with our presentation for you. So this year, there were several factors that were impacting the FY '24 budget, some of them are repeats from years past. But this year in particular, we have contractual obligations. We are in our third year, entering into our third year of our collective bargaining agreement with our MTA units. And this year, we are in the midst of negotiating with our AFSMI units. So those are ongoing. We have enrollment that we watch and to determine where staffing needs are and any shifts that we have there. We have a strong commitment for resourcing for high-quality curriculum materials. I mentioned that earlier. There are some areas and some departments in our schools that had not resourced their materials in over 15 or 20 years. So we've been taking a really good look at our cycle of review for all of our curriculum. Our department funding requests are always something that we have to meet and find out what's going on. Areas like transportation, special education have rising costs associated with all kinds of things. In particular, this year, we had an unanticipated increase from the OS, for our special education private schools, and that is a 14% increase in tuition rates for our private schools. Just to sort of put that into perspective, it's typical about a 2% to 3% increase over the, you know, per year. And then finally, we also had unanticipated expenses around health insurance increases. We typically are somewhere between 3% and 5% as we review and prepare, and this year, it's a 16% increase in health insurance. So we had a lot to work with and a lot to do. Our goal is and has been to present you a level-funded budget. Our work this year was a little more challenging, given a couple of unanticipated expenses, but we believe that we're presenting a budget that is level-serviced for our students. And so as you look up there, FY '23's final budget appropriation was $69,343,934. And this year, our draft budget proposal is for $72,653,940. That includes Chapter 70 funding, which has remained steady across the governor, the House, and the Senate at $14,554,481, which would leave a proposed city contribution of $58,109,459. I mentioned contractual obligations, and we are entering our third year of our collective bargaining agreement with our teachers' union, paras' union, and administrative units. Those are at two and three quarters. We have, that, the number that's up there reflects all of our employees, however, estimated at a similar rate. Our steps and lanes are, steps this year for teachers is $683,989, and our lanes are about $250,000. And there is the unanticipated healthcare increase at $1,365,615, which is a really large increase for that. So our total contractual obligations before we do anything is $3,747,724. Every year, and if you look in your budget book, you can find this list, and I believe, I was going to have the page ready, it's on page five of your budget book, if you'd like to look, but this is just sort of a synopsis of what that is. As you know, we have grade levels. One year, we might have three first grades, and the next year, we might have four first grades in a given building. These are the, this represents sort of those changes as they shift. This year, it happens that there's a zero change in FTEs as we make all of the shifts and changes in the different buildings and in the different grade levels, and that's represented up there on that chart. Our middle school and high school district staffing changes. At the middle school, we are increasing one English language learner teacher based on enrollment of a number of students that have, English is not their first language. And we, the high school are increasing a 1.0 FTE, but that is in the form of a 1.0 ELL para professional. And then finally, district-wide, it's a 1.0 FTE change, but it's actually two positions. Our float nurse had previously been funded through a DPH grant. That float nurse is someone who is, we added during the pandemic, but really, after seeing how it fulfills the need across the district, it's something that we wish to keep. So we added that into our appropriated budget. And we are increasing a speech therapist by 1.0, and that speech therapist primarily to serve our autism population in our AIM programs. I would be remiss to talk about our budget without mentioning the ESAR grants. As you know, well, I don't know if you know, but ESARs 1 and 2 are closed. We have expended those and closed those out. All that remains is ESAR 3. We were awarded $4,741,978 in ESAR 3 funding. That spanned over three fiscal years, well, technically, three and a quarter, because that, that funding will no longer be available after September 30th of 2024, which kind of ekes us in a little bit. We, in FY '22, we were, we only expended $94,896, and that was via a direct payment to MTRS. That's because we were utilizing ESARs 1 and 2 during that time, but the MTRS expenses moved over. In FY '23, and this was on April 6th, when this number was calculated, our expenditures to date, to date had been $1,873,553. And then our additional planned expenditures in FY '24 are $2,773,529. So we're required to report all of this information in, at different points in time to the Department of Ed. And so in addition to that, they ask us not only how much are we spending, but where are we spending our money? And this is just sort of a breakdown of where our expenditures are. Addressing physical health and safety, 18%. Meeting students' academic, social, and emotional needs, and they exclude mental health in that. So it's kind of tricky. We sit there often and say, is this mental health? This is social, emotional? I'm not really sure, but we'll put it in one place. So that came out to 66%. Mental health supports at 12%, and then operational continuity at 4%. This is also available in the budget book. I'm not really exactly sure of the page, but this is the cost, each, each building as a cost center, and then the district-wide cost centers that we have. And these are the totals for each one of those. It breaks the budget down for you so you can see in which buildings which expenses are going. You'll notice in our five elementary schools, they're pretty steady across, a little higher at Cove and North Beverly. Those are where our AIM programs are housed, and the cost of those programs are a little bit higher than in some of the schools. And then sometimes, it is just a matter of where you have more veteran teachers and where you have newer teachers because the salary ranges are different. At our middle school, our middle school budget is at $11,977,63. Our high school budget, budget is at $12,688,09. And then we have the various cost centers that are district-wide at the bottom down below, including our special edu, sorry, our special education budget at $10,291,419. Where we are in the legislative process, the governor's budget came out on March 1st. It's the first time we saw our $14,544,481 amount, which was predicted... It's the first time we saw our $14,544,481 amount, which was predict, our Chapter 70. Our Chapter 70 money has not changed from one budget to another. There are other districts and towns around us that have seen fluctuation in that, but Beverly's has remained constant through the whole process, and we anticipate that it would remain at that. So again, we're at the city contrib, the final draft budget proposal of $72,653,940, and I am, I think, happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Thank you, Dr. Truchek. And I would just wanted to comment on your, your comments about the timeline and just say, I think we first started talking about this budget back in the spring at our joint school committee, city council budget meeting, and not a lot of surprises here. But with that, I'd ask our budget analyst, Mr. Perry, from your perspective, $58 million is a big part of the city budget. Any comments you'd like to make?
Well, as I wrote to you in my documents back on, let me get the right date here, back in May 25th, yes, so a couple of thoughts. Number one, 47, it's a 4.77% increase, okay, from last year to this current fiscal year, of which they're using 47.6% of all our new revenues, about 6.9 and change, if you refresh your memory. So I would, as I said to you in my oral presentation, as well as I think in my written presentation to you, this is pretty much a level-funded budget. There is a few, I think, based on my review of their budget document, I think there was three teachers, but don't hold me to that, but I thought I saw her in the document, which I have with me in addition, but that's nothing like we've seen in years gone by. They've really been challenged this year, in my view, though I'm trying to crunch some numbers as Dr. Truchek was up there. I got a different number for the healthcare, but, but healthcare was a real challenge this year, in my view, and as well as on the municipal side, as you well know. And the other thing is this special ed stuff. It's, it's really expensive. As Council Feldman knows of our work, we were sitting here last November and dealing with Dr. Truchek, and I appreciate Councilor St. Louis' comments. A lot of this is not a secret to any of you. You know this is coming, which is really important, why we do the work we do so early. So there's no shocks or surprises. But from my observations, you know, obviously, the entire budget's balanced. We're not seeing a large expansion of services this year, not only on the municipal side, but certainly on the school side this year. It's a little more reserved than we've seen in other years, and most of it, I think, is sped-related, at least with the schools and healthcare-related. They've also, as you know, put some money aside. They're, they're going to deal with collective bargaining, which is important, and they're trying to address that. So the bottom line to it is, it's certainly, we're not expanding anywhere near what we did in prior years. This is kind of one of the leanest school budgets I've seen since I've been with you, and in general, it's, I think, fair and appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. And with that, I would open it up to questions from the subcommittee. Council President, any questions or comments?
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Dr. Truchek, for the presentation. Thank you, Ms. Sherburne, for your assistance. It was really helpful to see. I just, I had a question. I wondered if you could expand a little bit, Dr. Truchek. It actually occurred to me when Ms. Delakai was talking about unfunded mandates from the state for the Health Department, that there were a whole bunch of peers in the room who probably understood what that felt like very well on the school side of things. So I know when we had the opportunity to meet with you at our joint meeting, we had a presentation about City Connects. I wondered if you could just expand a little bit more about wraparound services generally in the schools. There's obviously a lot that schools are charged with, and if you would be able to expand just a bit about challenges that you see that families and students are facing, and, I mean, you've touched on it, but areas where you feel like this budget is able to address that and need that you see ahead that we should be aware of.
Yeah, in particular, I, especially in regards to City Connects and what City Connects has been bringing to us and what we've been, you know, working with them on and hope even for a greater expansion of resources over the course of the next year, is in the area of mental health. And so right now, you know, we look at what school services we can offer, but then we also look at what community services can we help families access that need supports. Beds are hard to come by, therapists are hard to come by, there are just, it's just a really challenging time if you are trying to access mental health supports outside of the school. And schools aren't really designed to provide some of the more intensive mental health types of supports that some families and students are needing right now. So I think that's a really big challenge. One of the benefits, Megan Sudak, who is our program manager, has been able to kind of reach out and connect. There's a City Connects program manager in Salem as well. They've come together and shared resources across, in different opportunities for different kinds of therapy, different ways of accessing it, different, you know, connections. Sometimes it's about connections, right? When you're looking for a family to try to find a bed somewhere, it's been helpful. Our services for even our partnerships with either Leahy Health or Home for Little Wanderers, we have a number of counseling services and agencies that we work with. Our relationship with Big Brother, Big Sister, and finding mentors for our students that, things that can happen outside of school, that's been a really big help. And I don't know if you remember, I called it my chaos slide. We had that slide where just services were floating around everywhere, and we're really kind of packaging them together now much more neatly. They're available on a dashboard. Our counselors can access them a little bit more readily. We know which students are accessing services within our schools so that we can find different ways to support them, and efforts aren't really duplicated, so that's been really, really helpful. That's been a really big push for what we've been doing and how we've been doing it. So we're very, I feel very fortunate that we were able to kind of bring that in and have that support for our families in our district.
Thank you. Can I ask a follow?
Please.
Thank you. That's, that's really helpful. I wonder, as, as you pointed out when you talked about what was contractually obligated, you know, that's where you're starting from. Mr. Perry, you just talked about how this is really level-funded, level-service funded budget.
Well, level with the $2 million of unexpected and unanticipated expenses.
Yes.
Other than that.
But I wondered if you could, just as, as a group of leaders in the city who are charged with thinking about not only this budget, but what might be ahead for all of our departments and for our schools, could you just elaborate a little bit more on, you talked about also ESER funds sort of closing out?
Yep.
Are there challenges you see down the trajectory that, that we should be aware of?
So I definitely do. I think that it's really important for all of us to recognize the, the climate and the idea that inflation is up. Everybody's wondering about their salaries. We're going into negotiations with our MTA units coming up. You know, we're all watching the news, so we're aware that, you know, people are interested in what, what's happening around salary structures. I think that inflation is something that we're keeping our eye on and wondering what that will do and how that will impact. And then, you know, ESER, we're working so hard. Jean and Dot actually spend hours, and Bethany pouring over to make sure that we're not leaving ourselves open for a cliff in a couple of years. We work really hard to make sure that as we identify expenses that we're utilizing ESER funding for, we know that that funding's not going to be there in FY '25. So for example, we have probably eight, eight Jean maybe, eight, eight FTEs that are continuing on ESER going into FY '24. We're cognizant of the fact that those eight positions are either going to need to be funded through a different grant program, or they're not, you know, they're, they're not, and we've identified those eight as, as ones that we know won't roll into the appropriated budget, but that, you know, so we've been cautious. By the same token, I don't want to restrict services for our kids. If we can have some reading services at the middle school for another year before we cut to reading teachers, right, then we want to do that. We don't want to not use the money for that while it's available. So it's a really tricky balance. We're watching very closely our technology budget. So if you remember, we used very generously CARES ARPA money and purchased to get us in the, when the pandemic hit, to get to that one-to-one place where we are for students so that they, you know, each student has access to a device should we need to use it. But we know that that requires a sustainability, you know, effort over the course of the years, and so we're trying to be cautious about that. The textbooks, we don't really buy textbooks anymore all the time. We buy licenses, right? Which is great, but we used textbooks for 20 years. We can, the licenses expire at the end of maybe four years or five years, depending on what you go on. So we have to be cautious in our software balancing as to how we're, how we're purchasing them and trying to get them on a rotation so that we're not hit with everything all at one time in a, in a coming budget. So, you know, we want to remain competitive. We have a lot of things that we need to think about. So I believe that the next couple of years, I think, I don't think there's anyone anywhere that isn't thinking that the next couple of years are going to be challenging, right? I don't think we know for sure where we're going. Look at the housing market. My son's trying to buy a house. I'm, bush, that's like, you know, so there's just a lot of unknowns there. And so I urge everyone to be cautious. We worked really hard to come forward with a budget that, that met the needs of what we needed this year. We had a lot of knowns, though. We had that collective bargaining agreement already in place. We knew what our, what our raises were going to be then. We had, we knew what our costs were going to be for transportation and for, we had a plan around accessing vehicles and what we're doing. I'm just concerned, I just would be cautious. I'm not concerned, but I think everyone needs to know that, I think that this is a year when we're kind of getting through the budget on a fairly marked, but I'm not sure what the future holds, so making everyone cautious of that.
Thank you. And just one last question.
Jeff, please.
This is a little bit of a different topic. I appreciate your helping me to understand that better. With the increase, the 14% increase that's allowed, can you just help me refresh my own memory and, I guess, refresh all of our memory? The way that Circuit Breaker works, it's a year behind.
Yes, so-
But it's also not a guarantee that it would-
Correct.
-reimburse up to that amount. Is that correct?
Correct. So, so currently, we, we worked really hard over the last few years to build our Circuit Breaker up so that we are at a, we're at a fairly confident level with it. The OSD increase is $775,000 for Beverly. That's the amount that that is. So in order for us, we are still keeping our fingers crossed, we're hopeful. I would ask for you to add advocacy to your list, if you can advocate in any way, for some consideration around that, for that, there to be some reimbursement from the state. However, what we, what will end up happening is we'll have to dip into what we have for our Circuit Breaker reserves. That will bring us from about 90% to about 40%, which is really much lower than we would ever want to be. But we know that the following year, Circuit Breaker, but remember, Circuit Breaker really only brings in about 40% of the total cost of what it is, right? Because there's your, you have your $49,000 that you have to meet first, and then you get 75% of anything that goes over that. And so that, that's something that, you know, we're working through and that we're going to have to keep our eye on. Again, you know, special education is something that Bethany and I spend a lot of time thinking about and talking about. When we have, a single out-of-district placement can be anywhere ranging from $160,000 to $420,000 for one single out-of-district placement. And so we're all, that's where that Circuit Breaker money comes in, and we kind of rely on having that and that availability, so. Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
That was really helpful. And I also, when I said 75%, you helped me remember that there's first in amount that we-
First is, yes.
-before it comes in at that, which I always forget, so thank you.
And there's more advocacy if you want. We're trying to get the, we're trying to get that reimbursed at 90%, just because it would be a little more helpful for all of us, so.
Thank you very much, and, and thank you also to your whole team for all the work that you all do.
I know, they're amazing.
Very appreciative. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions, councilors? Councilor Rand.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the presentation. It's always a lot to digest, and it's like a whole different animal from the city budget, so a lot of, a whole different system to really think about. And I wanted to ask a couple of questions. One on more of the kind of employee staffing side of schools. I'm wondering if you are, you know, what your, what the outlook is like for hiring paras and aides? I know just from my own day job and what I see also on the news that it's a challenging time out there. And kind of as a follow-up to that, I'm wondering if there's any consideration for expanding the support for that role by adding something like steps and lanes for those positions? Or training that then sort of adds value to their, both the paras' output and professional status?
So that, that, what you just mentioned, training, that's the direction we did, we did go when we did our last budget in our last negotiations. It is, we are, of all of the positions that we have in our district, our paras are the most challenging to fill, largely because often when we, we have, we have more openings than not, because we hire paras who work for us for a couple of years and then become teachers. And so there's a lot of turnover in, for, for some, and then we have a subset of paras who have been working with us for a very long time, and they, they have been around. So I think it's improved a little. It depends on the particulars. It's very, it's more challenging to find paras in the AIM program than it is to find challenges, paras in the learning centers, so to speak. And so those are the areas that we're really trying to strengthen. We actually went through school committee and, and added a position of ABA Assistant, Assistant to the BCBA. There's a lot of letters in there. But those are more specialized roles, and so that's one area, one, one way that we try to address some of the need that we're seeing and the need to provide supports for students.
Thank you.
Transportation's more challenging to find positions for. We're, we're still struggling for drivers, CDL drivers in particular. That's another area that we're working really hard to try to, we've tried a lot of different things, advertising in different places, looking at, you know, different ways to structure it. And not only, we have, we have awesome bus drivers, but our bus drivers are aging, so that's an area that we really are, are working hard on, finding positions.
And have you, and I know this is a tough question to ask, given the constraints of this budget, but have you increased the pay for those roles? And I, Mr. Perry is probably cringing that I even asked that, but-
Well, we go, so the, the paras are part of the MTA, so are negotiating, we, we will negotiate with them in the fall. Transportation, we're in negotiations with them right now. I would imagine that's part of the conversation.
Yeah. And I know, full disclosure, I'm an aide in a different school district, so I have the, the aide, and, you know, that, that's in my heart. I know the challenges, but I also know a school falls apart without that.
My first job ever was a para professional in education.
There you go. So you know as well, it's, it's not easy out there, both to, to balance a budget, to be an aide, or to be looking to fill those positions. I really support the practice of adding training and professional development that is, is meaningful and advances, you know, just increases the opportunity for somebody who's at the lowest wage earner in our community.
I don't know if you remember, but we, and I don't know if we mentioned it at the joint council, but one of the things that we worked really hard at this year was two different programs. Our Parent-to-Para program, where we were reaching into the community and looking for members of the community that might be parents that were looking to become paras and providing opportunities for training and testing for that, as well as a Para-to-Teacher program, which we've been working on to try to support those people that are in the para professional roles to complete their education or, you know, get supports for MTLs or do whatever they need to become, to join the teaching force, so.
You always have a great answer. That's, I like both of those pathways. And then I had another question just about sort of where we should look, when we're looking at this budget, kind of where we should look to see the reflection of how you're supporting students that are struggling to stay in high school in particular. I know there are so many different programs, and I've learned about some of them over the past few years, but if you can just sort of guide me on that.
We have, we have a few different programs. In particular, what we are, what we are investing heavily in are our pathways, and that is to help students explore careers. So we're thinking college and career-ready, right? We want, we want to acknowledge that maybe not everybody goes off to a four-year college. Not everyone is, is experiencing the traditional high school, the way that, you know, all of us might have. And so we've, we've looked in a couple of different directions. One of them is through our After Dark partnerships that we have, so opportunities for students who are entering into their junior year and are sort of coming to, may not have been doing school well, or school may not have been their jam up until that point, but now are maturing and realizing that they want to explore career options that may not include a four-year college. We have an active partnership with the Essex Tech, and soon, I'll tell you now, Rachel, coming on Wednesday, and I know, we are actually expanding our partnerships to Salem High School and allowing some students to do After Dark programs over there with them. There just aren't enough seats at Essex Tech for the After Dark program. So our pathways, our innovation pathways, looking at early education as a career path, looking at business. We have a pretty strong culinary department at the, so we're not a vocational school. The city decided a long time ago- The city decided a long time ago, that, way before I was here, that, you know, they closed Patton Wing, and there are no vocational options per se at Beverly High School. So we're looking to how to, how can we creatively match some opportunities for students and mirror what some of the Chapter 74 programs look like? And so that, we're kind of really digging in to that work right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Any other council, Councilor Bowen?
Thank you. I think a couple of questions that will follow nicely on Councilor Rand's questions. I know the school department has been doing a lot of work on equity and inclusion, did a racial equity audit before the city side did, and sort of had those results and an action plan. So just wondered if you could speak a little bit about the progress there and how the equity and inclusion principles are reflected in the budget, particularly around staffing and sort of how we support and advance our lowest-paid staff positions, and also for, you know, recruiting a diverse workforce.
Yeah.
And then on the student side, I know there's a lot of work happening as well.
Yep, all right, great, well, thank you. You know, as far as our recruiting and options, we've really expanded out. Erin Brown is our Director of Information and Human Resources. We're very fortunate to have her. She has really revamped our whole human resources department. But it wasn't, it was, there was a lot of things that we've done that we think have improved Beverly as a, as a desirable place for, for maybe teachers of color, or Hispanic, Latino, or any other ethnic groups. And it starts with the outreach and expanding where we're looking, but it also has to do with the internal control. So we took a look at our interview process. We took a look at the questions that we ask in an interview. We look at how are we represented on our website, and what does our, what does our presence look like, and, you know, do we feel representative, and do we really have a commitment to that? We have, I think successfully, I will not, we have not fixed the problem, we do not, we did not solve it, but we have expanded. And I, we also take the time to follow up with and provide mentorship to teachers that come into the district, who may be, you know, the only teacher of color in a particular building, and provide mentorship. And that, we think those have all had very positive, have been received very positively. And so we continue to do work in that area. In terms of, again, our Parent-to-Para pipeline and our Para-to-Teacher pipeline is for everyone. It's inclusive for anyone who's interested in looking and working through that, so we think that's great. Dr. Morgan, who is, could not be here tonight, is amazing as our Director of Opportunity, Access, and Equity. His work with both the students and staff, he runs a affinity group for educators of color on the North Shore, not just Beverly, so educators from other districts around us are part of that group. We actually, through that group, got a lot of the information that we utilized as we were improving our own processes through feedback from that stakeholder group. So that's a lot of the work that we've done. I think your follow-up was about students. We continue, you know, with the work that we're doing. This year I had a student ambassador, I had a superintendent's ambassador cabinet made up of students from the high school. It was a diverse group of students. We met about monthly, and it was really eye-opening for me to have firsthand discussions about how it feels to be either a student of color, or, you know, a student of a group that's not the majority represented. We are predominantly white suburb, and what it feels like for them. And so we hear them, and we're really working with them. We talked about curriculum, we talked about, you know, the, whatever kinds of issues that we run up against in the high school. We've had a couple of incidents of either hate, you know, symbols being found or something, and we call upon our students to kind of help us address that and work with us as we do that. We have one tomorrow afternoon, if anyone wants to join us, a community conversation at 2:45 at Beverly High School, I think, in our auditorium. And I think we have Rabbi Adler's at that. There's another someone, I'm not sure who else, and Dr. Morgan running that. And so we're, we're working very proactively to, to make sure that everyone realizes that we are a belonging and welcoming community, and that it is for everyone, so.
Good, Councilor Bowen? Councilor Sweeney, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Dr. Chrochek, for presenting to us tonight, and then also for taking the time to meet with me last week. I certainly appreciated that. And since that meeting, I had the chance to look at some of the data available on the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESI's website. And what I found, I compared some metrics about Beverly to a few of our neighboring communities, Danvers, PBUD, Salem, and then the state average. And we were actually on the low end of those communities and the state for in-district per pupil spending, but topped the list for MCAS scores, which I think is really a testament to the work that you're doing and that the teachers across the district are doing. So just wanted to quickly make note of that and really say that, you know, the data there shows that you guys are doing a hard, are working very hard to educate our students with the resources that we have as a district. So I appreciate that. One thing I did notice, Beverly wasn't unique in this sense, but our MCAS scores did drop notably from 2019, which is attributable to the pandemic. My wife is a third-grade teacher, so I hear from her firsthand the impact that the pandemic has had on students. I know that you had mentioned tonight some of the work with the City Connects program and otherwise efforts that the district has been taking to try to help correct the course in terms of learning loss from the pandemic and getting our students back on track. Just with that in mind, is there anything else that you'd like to add in terms of specific things that the council should be taking note of, that the district is doing to, now a few years out of the pandemic, try to make sure that students really are back and gaining as much as possible of what they had lost from?
Yeah, that's a great question. I, you know, I, we, I looked, as we look often at that data, and we're in the midst of just ending our data meetings across all of our elementary schools and our middle school and high school. We do see that they have rebounded, at least on our, our district data. MCAS is not out and available yet, but we have seen that they, that there has been, you know, an uptick for that. It's really hard for me to imagine missing two and a half years of school. And when I say two and a half years of school, particularly for our middle schoolers and our high schoolers, they, they were home for the second half of one year. They were in a hybrid model for the next year, and then we thought, oh, great, we're back, and it was a hard year. So, you know, so we really feel like, I think we hit the ground running this year. I feel like this year has been very, you know, has been a really good year for learning. It's been a good year for, for kids to be back in. They're, they're kind of, they're kind of like, okay, deep breath, we did this, we're through it. And so I, you know, I do believe that we'll see that go, at least based on the data meetings that we've been seeing. We, you know, we're feeling very confident that, you know, we've, we've done some great work to do some catch-up. I do still think we have to watch our third and fourth graders. I think that the K1, 2, you know, it was hard if you, if you were, if you missed kindergarten in first grade, if you think about that, like, I, my grandson's five, gonna be five. If he were to go to be seven and not have school, I don't know, you know, with that said, we were fortunate that we had them in school for at least half a day, but it still was different. So, you know, all of those things are, I think, you know, I, I think we, as I indicated earlier, I think that we're going to have to look, and Jerry, block your ears, I think we're going to really have to look at our budgets as we come up. I do, we are on the lower end of per pupil spending. That is a very tricky formula, you know, so there's a lot of reasons that we are, but we are. And so when we look, we're at 16,000, I think, and PBUD's at 20, and Salem's at, you know, 19, and, you know, we have to ask ourselves why, you know, and our enrollments are, you know, steady. We're not losing, so a lot of our surrounding communities' enrollments are dropping. Our enrollments are not dropping. Our enrollments are steady across the board. And so I think that's great. That means we're doing a great job. Our school choice waitlists are very long, you know, people want to come here, they're, we're doing a good job, but I think, you know, we all know that we're going to have to take a look at, at what's going on in the next couple of years, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilor Sweeney. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Perry?
You didn't block your ears.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I must have a bad reputation among a lot of people. I don't know. I thought I was a good guy. Okay. I wanted to piggyback a little bit on Dr. Chrochek's commentary about future budgets, and she's really right, and I appreciate the efforts. She spent a lot of time with us over the fall with Council Feldman, and I think that's a great experience, and it helps us all. And as I indicated earlier, I think we all know, there's not a lot of surprises coming before you, which is a good thing. But I do want to talk briefly, because it does kind of dovetails a little bit, we'd be remiss if we don't at least get this on the table, on a couple of things. Specifically, as you know, the education costs are not just the Beverly public schools, but also we have charter school sending, which I think you have before you a motion we'll talk about next week. We had, I think it's like $300,000, we're going to come up with to cover that. We'll take care of that with you next week. And of course, school choice, money's coming in, money's coming out, that's fine, too. But I wanted to talk briefly a little bit, I had the opportunity last week to talk with Paul Manzo, as it relates to the North Shore vocational education, and as you know, and this does impact future, how we handle our educational budgets, and especially the public school system, but it's important that the public be aware of the fact, and I did talk about this a little bit a couple of weeks ago, we're seeing a 25.4% increase in our vocational education costs, as I understand it from my discussions with Mr. Manzo, who's also on Council Feldman's committee, so he's been extremely helpful to us. But we're going from, I believe, 140 students in the current fiscal year to 170 on, you know, in September. And as I understand it, we are graduating approximately 30 Beverly students from the vocational education, you know, right now, I guess, but we're going to be entering approximately 60 students for the freshman class, according to Mr. Manzo. But, and we, we budgeted for that, that's why you're seeing the 25% increase, again, which we knew last November and December. But I do have to bring your attention that in my discussions with him, we're looking almost in a similar scenario next year. So when we come back next year, and I won't cringe as much, I'll miss Councilor Rand, but next year, he's anticipating an additional 30 students to go to the vocational education next year. So, you know, we're gonna, we'll deal with this in the fall, as we always do, and it's a challenge, but I'd be remiss, I feel, Mr. Chairman, if I didn't at least bring that to everyone's attention. It is a challenge, and it does have an impact on all the budget, including the school system. So I think it's important to understand that that is coming, and it's something we'll have to deal with as we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. And I guess, is that, what does that do to the growth?
Well, it's simple. I mean, we anticipate in FY '24, 170 students, and in FY '25, we anticipate to, they're planning on 200 students.
Is the enrollment of the school going up, or is just our portion going up?
The enrollment going to the vocational education is anticipated to go up with Beverly students, by 30 students, according to Mr. Manzo.
Okay.
So, you know, how that impacts the public school, I don't know. We need to talk that through. I don't have, I definitely don't have these answers, but I do anticipate, we have to prepare for that vocational thing next year, because it seems to be growing. Again, I get, this is from Mr. Manzo. So I felt it important, and I share this tonight.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Perry. Councilor Sweeney, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to quickly build off of that, maybe pose Counselor St. Hilaire's question a little more specifically, something for us to look at. Is it the enrollment at Essex Tech as a whole that's going up, or is it Beverly's piece of the pie that's getting bigger while the school number is capped around the same total number of students?
As I understand it, I don't know the answer as to the, maybe Dr. Chrochek knows a little bit about that, but my, I don't know the answer of the overall system, but my understanding, it's going to go up for the Beverly students, and the Beverly impact on the budget is something, I'm anticipating about another 25% for vocational education next year. That's what I get in my head right now.
Dr. Chrochek, did you have something to add there?
Yeah, no, I would just say-
Please.
If you're all set, Counselor, I can-
Yeah, I guess, I mean, we would just need to ask the staff there about, is enrollment going down elsewhere for other towns and up for Beverly, or is it just-
Yeah, let's have Dr. Chrochek answer.
So I'm going to, you want to just go to the next slide? So I had these, the enrollments, oh, is it hidden? Never mind, you can't show it. So first, two things. First of all, it, we do, we did have 59 students accepted in freshman year at Essex Tech this year. I think it was about three years ago, and I don't know if I was standing here or in front of school committee, when the question was asked, what can we do to get more kids at the tech? Because I think you need to be working harder with your seventh and eighth graders, and make sure they know that this is an opportunity that they can do. So I would say congratulations to Maggie Lilly and to the staff at the middle school, because they've done their job. And we have infused a lot of career vocational training. We are beginning in sixth grade with students. Some sixth graders are going on a field trip, going over, did you go today?
Yes, today.
Yes, and they're going over, and they're, they're going there for career explorations. We got a grant to do some career explorations, and how can we learn more about it? The truth of the matter is, Beverly does not have a vocational option for students other than Essex Tech. We've been creative, we've expanded into AfterDoc, so years ago, we would only get 28 or 30 students into Essex Tech. And the cry was, I'm sure you were all hearing from families, how come I can't get my child into Essex Tech? And so the, there's a, there's, it's a double-edged sword, right? We know that that opportunity for technical education is valuable, and we know that in the environment and the climate in the world today, people are looking for that, right? We also know that our enrollments are growing, right? So we are, well, you got it up. So if you can, if you can see, if this is our, if you look at our elementary school enrollments, those used to be 320s, those used to be 315s. I don't know if you, if any of you were here on the council at that time, but our enrollments in our younger grades are all up. We had the 378, 376 in grades two and three. That's a lot of kids. And so they're going to go somewhere. And the other, the other piece of it is, if our per pupil is 16,000, and you send them to the tech, or they come to our school, that's, you know, it costs, that's how much it costs to educate our kids. So, so I just, I just want to be clear, and I believe that Essex Tech is, I don't know for sure, their individual enrollment numbers, but they are very aggressively expanding their offerings in, in response to the workforce, and in response to what, you know, what everyone is looking for. So, and there are some communities that are trying to cap it. So I know over in Danvers, they're trying to say, we don't want any more than 35 kids, right? So PBUD has 300 kids at the tech. Salem has, I don't even know the numbers, I think, I've talked to Paul, and I think we're fourth of the sending communities. So there are three communities that send more kids than we do, and we're fourth, and it's kind of ironic, because if I look at the North Shore Consortium, we're fourth, there are three communities that send more kids than we do. You know, that seems to be where we fall in terms of our population size and all of that. So, but you, you are correct, and I do believe we'll see 55 or 60 kids, unless something happens, unless the legislation goes through where there's a lottery, and then that will change, and maybe they'll be asking us to determine a cap, and I don't know what that would do. I will say that we have the, fortunately, we're a very desirable choice community, and so we have a lot of families that want to choice in, so we are able to make sure that we're bringing in, we have waiting lists in virtually every grade level for school choice for our community, so, you know, I think those are, as far as our enrollments go, we're able to kind of do that. But I just wanted to clarify, you are, I do believe you're correct that that number will be-
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Yeah, thank you, and I'm glad to hear the work. It's a great option to have Essex Tech, but then also I appreciate the work you guys do in district on specific career tracks.
And we're going to try, we're, we're really working on that. I spent some time with DESI this year, talking about what options do we have. So if you remember, there are bylaws as a member of the North, Essex Tech, that prohibit us from being able to expand into some areas if they're in competition, unless we can prove there's a seat problem or a workforce demand, and so we're looking at all of those options and really trying to kind of build upon that.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, any comments or questions before we wrap up? No questions, maybe comments?
I mean, Dr. Chrochek's doing a wonderful job. I'm doing it.
I think we are getting close. Anyone, any last questions, comments? Okay. Before we adjourn, we're back here tomorrow night?
We are back here tomorrow night.
You want to tell us what we're doing?
Uh, yes. Tomorrow night, we are back here for a public hearing on the budget, and that will be at 6:30. And that's a little bit unusual for when our regular meetings are, so I think for members of the public, it's just a good reminder that our budget meetings have all been 6:30 starts, and so we will have an opportunity to hear from members of the public on the proposed budget that we've been hearing from department by department. And so members of the public can, can come, can join us, you can sign up when you arrive. You don't have to tell us ahead of time that you want to speak. You can also come and just listen. It's an important part of how we hear feedback from our community. Dr. Chirochek referenced that the school committee had its own public hearing on the school portion of the budget. That's part of the process every year. Our public hearing will encompass the entire budget. So schools and municipal budget purpose.
Thank you, so we'll be back tomorrow. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.[1755.21]